From Kern Government Television, welcome to this week's Kern County Board of Supervisors meeting, originating from the County Administrative Center located at 1115 Truxton Avenue in Bakersfield, California. Grounded in ideas, energy, and innovation, Kern County's vision is to be a driving force for the world's fifth-largest economy. And our mission is to exceed expectations of the communities we serve, changing the way they feel about government, those who manage it, and the services it provides. Today's Kern County Board of Supervisors meeting will convene momentarily.
Board to reconvene, welcome back Kern County and the viewing public at home. This is the 2:00 PM session for the Kern County Board of Supervisors, regular meeting, Tuesday, September 23rd. We'll begin as usual with roll call. Madam Clerk?
Supervisor Peters?
Here.
Supervisor Parlier?
Here.
Supervisor Flores?
Here.
Supervisor Couch?
Here.
Supervisor Perez?
Here. Thank you. We will turn now to County Council, Ms. Graham.
Yes. Good afternoon.
For a report on actions taken in closed session.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair. Members of the board, this morning, following your board's AM agenda, you heard items 32 and 33 in closed session, and there were no reportable actions taken.
Thank you very much. We're going to move to our consent matters. But before listing consent matters, I do want to indicate that items 29 and 30 will be continued to October 7, 2025, at 2:00 PM. So regarding items 29 and 30, they will simply be continued to August 7 at 2:00 PM and will not be heard today or action taken on them. Consent matters are listed with a capital C, capital A, and they're considered to be routine and non-controversial by staff, so we typically handle them in one motion, unless, of course, members of the public would like to weigh in on consent matters. You may do so today on the items I'm about to list, excluding 29 and 30. In two weeks, you can comment on those. Consent matters begin on page 2, and they include item 3. On page 3, the sole item, number 4. Page 4, all items listed, 5 through 6. On page 5, all items listed, 7 through 9. On page 6, all items listed, 10 through 13. On page 7, all items listed, 14 through 21. On page 8, all items listed, 22 through 26. On page 9, item 27, as well as 20... No, I'm sorry, 29 and 30 are continued, so item 31. Let me restate that. On page 9, item 27, as well as 31. Correct?
Yes.
Excellent. On page 10, all items listed, 33 through 37. On page 11, all items listed, 38 through 42. Those are the consent matters for 2:00 PM calendar. Are there any members of the public who would like to weigh in or give thoughts regarding those matters? Okay, seeing no interest from the public in doing so, I would ask my colleagues for comment, question, or action.
Second.
We have a motion by Supervisor Flores, a second with Supervisor Parlier. Please cast your votes.
The motion is approved, all ayes?
Excellent, thank you very much. We're going to move to public presentations now. This portion of the agenda is reserved for members of the public who would like to provide comment or ask questions on matters that are within the jurisdiction of the Kern County Board of Supervisors but are not on today's specific agenda. For items that are on the agenda, we'll get to those later. But for now, please, items that are on, are not on today's agenda, but are within the jurisdiction of the Kern County Board of Supervisors. Good afternoon, welcome.
Good. Name's Jesse Sanders, and I don't believe the demasking of ICE is on our agenda today.
I'm sorry, the...
Governor Newsom just signed a thing that says they want to take the mask...
That's not on today.
Okay, so along with that, it starts with ICE, because that's a big topic, but it leads down to our local law enforcement. He wants them not to be able to cover their face. So, there's plenty of reasons to cover their face. One of them is self-protection, so they don't get doxxed like a lot of the judges did during the decisions that were unpopular in the past. Others are, they have protective masks to protect them from people throwing stuff at them, or tear gas, or anything like that. I think Governor Newsom is overstepping his bounds. He's using ICE as a cover-up. This other stuff comes in, so I'm hoping that you don't subject our law enforcement to what he can enforce. He can enforce ICE laws, the laws on the federal, but he can enforce the laws that follow through with that, that dovetail into that on our own law enforcement. Our law enforcement needs to be protecting it. If that just means covering their face so it's not seen and doxed, that's good. Could be other things, but I hope you guys take a stand on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Jess. Any other comment on matters not on today's agenda but within the jurisdiction of the Board of Supervisors? Okay, there was a brief public comment period, or public presentations period. We're going to move to board member announcements or reports. Gentlemen? General Plan Amendment hearings. Madam Clerk, is that correct? Got it. Okay, excuse me. Okay, we're then going to move to our item that is up today for review. I think it's our only item now that consent has been approved, and that is a legislative matter, item number 28, a referral by Supervisor Peters, a response to September 9, 2025 referral regarding California Proposition 50, mid-decade congressional redistricting. And today, action will be taken on this resolution. And I believe that we have a legislative report, or from the CAO, who will be handling this matter and its introduction?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thomas Rowell with the Kern County Administrative Office, I'll be handling this item. So, good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. The item before you is a response to a referral directing staff to bring back an item regarding California's Proposition 50, which will appear on the special election ballot on November 4, 2025. In 2008, California voters approved the creation of the California Citizens Redistricting Commission, an independent body tasked with drawing congressional, legislative, and Board of Equalization district boundaries following each decennial census. This reform was intended to reduce political influence in redistricting and increase public trust in the process. Proposition 50 proposes a temporary departure from that model. If approved by voters, the measure would authorize the California State Legislature to draw new congressional district maps for the 2026 through 2030 election cycle, bypassing the Citizens Redistricting Commission for this period only. The measure was originally introduced in response to redistricting developments in Texas where lawmakers considered adopting new congressional maps mid-decade. While the initial version of Prop 50 included a contingency clause linking California's actions to Texas's, that language was removed. The final version now stands independently and will be decided solely by California voters. Prop 50 also includes a non-binding statement encouraging Congress to adopt independent redistricting commissions nationwide, but this language carries no legal effect. The measure has generated significant debate. Supporters argue that Prop 50 is a necessary response to partisan gerrymandering in other states and is intended to protect California's representation in Congress. Opponents contend that it undermines the independent redistricting process approved by voters and reintroduces political influence into map drawing. Litigation was filed challenging the measure's placement on the ballot, but the California Supreme Court ruled that it may proceed. For Kern County, the primary impacts would be administrative. If the measure passes, election staff would need to implement new congressional district boundaries beginning in 2026. This would involve adjusting precinct boundaries, updating voter information, and conducting public outreach. The California Department of Finance estimates that counties statewide will incur $251.3 million in one-time costs to administer the special election. Kern County shares estimated at $3.18 million. In summary, a yes vote on Prop 50 would implement the legislature's map through 2030, and no vote would retain the current commission-drawn map until the next redistricting cycle following the 2030 census. This concludes staff's prepared comments. The recommended action is for your board to discuss and take action on the draft resolution, which would formally oppose Prop 50 and reaffirm the county's support for independent redistricting in California.
Thank you very much, Thomas. I want to be clear for the crowd, this is a redistricting involving congressional maps, not supervisors' seats. Our seats remain the same through the next redistricting cycle, which is the census in 2030, and then typically, two years following that, we conduct redrawing of our maps here at the local level. This is about congressional maps, and now would be a good time for the... We'll hear from our colleagues momentarily, but this would be a good time for the public to weigh in. Give us your input, give us your thoughts, and come on down, please state and spell your name for the record. So, welcome. I see, I see interest from across the room on this matter. Please come on down and state, state and spell your name and give us your input. Good afternoon, sir.
Good afternoon. Dave Wescott, W-E-S-C-O-T-T, District 5 constituent. We'll run this back again from this morning. So, at the 9-9 meeting, Supervisor Peters had made a comment that Prop 50 was circumventing the will of the voters and that it is unfree and unfair by having them vote again on a redistricting 15 years after deciding an independent commission to draw district lines. Ladies and gentlemen, this is what democracy is. We literally have voters who are now currently 32-years-old, who that were 17 at the time could not vote in 2020. Now, you would be right if you were talking about Texas and Missouri, where voters were not even asked, and their state courts nor the Supreme Court have mandated this current 2025 iteration. That is unfree and unfair. But here in California, we lead by example, and it makes complete sense now, in 2025, that then, when there is a substantial change in position, such as Missouri and Texas doing mid-decade gerrymandering, California must act. And the way that we act is to allow the democratic process to happen again through the will of the people and see if the voters want to pass Prop 50 and conduct a temporary redistricting up to the year 2030 to protect democracy. Also, the maps were not completed in a so-called backroom, Supervisor Peters. They've been created by a demographic firm called Redistricting Partners, which has worked with the State's Redistricting Commission in the past. That firm is ran by Paul Mitchell, who built his reputation drawing nonpartisan maps for counties and colleagues, or I'm sorry, colleges, who have said, "I am doing something that I wished I weren't being forced into." Absolutely. I'm asking you to vote no on this resolution. The people of Kern County want to vote, love to vote, so let them vote. There is no reason to speak for your constituents when their ballots can do that. I understand it's under your purview and you have the ability to do that, doesn't mean we have to take those measures. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. There are others who would like to weigh in, please do so now.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair.
Supervisors, God bless America.
My name is Charles Shin. I'm a retired Marine. I would like to enlighten some folks on the last census that we had in 2020. There were 14 states that either undercounted or overcounted. There's been some research done with the Census Bureau, I don't think they're a right-wing organization, and they made allowances for states to recoup that mistake. The six undercounted states are Kansas, Florida, Mississippi, Tennessee, Texas. Notice, those are all red, considered red, states. They undercounted. The one exception to add to that is the one Democrat state, Illinois. So, all six of those states undercounted. The overcounts go as follows. Delaware, Hawaii, Massachusetts, Minnesota, New York, Rhode Island. Notice, those are all blue states. They overcounted. The two Republican anomalies that overcounted were Ohio and Utah. So, the way it looks to me, Texas and Florida and many other states are well within their rights to adjust for the undercounting that took place in the last census. And I think California had to suspend the Constitution to pass this proposition because it was short of the allotted amount of time that propositions have to be aired and be in public. in public. And the governor failed that mark substantially. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shin.
Hi, my name is Mona Pignon. I am a resident of Kern County, and I've been here a couple of years now. My question today is, with Prop 50, the decisions that you make today, just consider, is it going to be for your own benefit, furthering your political agenda, or is it going to be for the people? Because what the people wanted was, they voted for the independent commission to draw the lines. And what actually happened was, and if you go to the redistricting website, they have no part in drawing this map up. And so, one of the things that I would hope that you guys would consider is that you would listen to the constituents when they're coming to you like this, and they're asking you, "Hey, we don't agree with this. This is taking the voice away from the people, and it's putting it back into politicians' hands." And this isn't anything that nobody... Everyone already knows these things. I'm sure you've heard these talking points already, but you hear them from politicians. This is the people that are right in front of you that are asking you for these things to happen. The cost, that was what he said, was $3.18 million, just in Kern County, $251 million, and we're in a deficit? Why is this something that we're focusing on right now? Why aren't we trying to, you know, help the things that are wrong in our county and in our state? There's a lot of things wrong. So, my hope is that you would listen to we, the people. We, the people, voted. I wasn't a resident of California at that time, but I know in 2010, they voted for the commission to be able to draw those lines, and right now, that in-between was overstepped, and now we have politicians, and which we don't know where these mysterious maps come from. Can anybody tell me where they came from? I don't think anybody knows exactly where these maps came from, but both parties, both sides should be in outrage right now as far as pushing this thing through, because it's not good for either side. So, thank you for your time today. I appreciate what you guys are doing, and keep up the good work.
Thank you, ma'am. Good to see you, Jess.
My turn. Jeff Sanders. I'm here to say no on 50. First of all, those maps were started long before anybody knew about it, and it even came up to the people's notice, so we really didn't have any voice in it. Again, I'm going to re-point out that California's Constitution was suspended so that they could go into this. Supposedly, it's going to be returned at some point when the people that suspended it decide it's okay for us to have a Constitution. Gavin is doing this as a power grab, and you know, once people that power grab get power, they don't ever let it go. We won't get this back. We won't get our commission back. It is a political partisan grab to do this. A no vote will maintain the power for the people rather than giving more to Sacramento. Just hope you use some common sense and look to the future on protecting California from this power grab. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any other members of the public want to weigh in?
Hi, my name is Bill Lever. I'm a 5th District constituent. Thank you very much. And I speak in opposition to Proposition 50, because I view this as a terrible and costly precedent where representatives get elected and in the next election, they can be booted. In this case, the five districts that are targeted are quite clear that there are troublesome lawmakers that the governor wants to remove. So, getting this as a precedent will be a very dangerous thing, and it's only congressional right now, as you correctly state, but why couldn't it be assembly every time? Why couldn't it be county supervisors every time, as soon as you're troublesome too? So, no on Proposition 50 would keep the presumably independent council, independent commission, and would not let the partisan legislature do it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. How do you spell your last name, sir?
Oh, Lever, L-E-V-E-R.
L-E-V-E-R.
And to make it easy, remember, I'm a believer. I'm a believer. Neil Diamond wrote us off.
I love Neil Diamond. I grew up on him.
Paul, good to see you.
Hello, Paul Infessi, District 3. I am urging the Board of Supervisors to not take a position on Proposition 50. The fact is, it will be on the ballot for a special election, so the cost at this point is already a moot point. And unlike what happened in Texas and other states, we, the people, will get to vote on this, as is legally required since the current redistricting process was voted in by we, the people, the last time. Now, we really need to put to rest the story that has been spun by some bad players who say that the reason California is doing this is because states such as Texas are redistricting due to court orders. The truth is, this is overreached by the federal government under the control of President Trump. It has been well documented that Trump called the Texas governor, along with the others, to get their legislature to redistrict now specifically to boost Republican seats. I am not asking you to take a position on one side or the other as a board. I'm just asking you to not take a position at all. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. Are there any others who would like to weigh in? Now would be the time to do so. Okay, looks like that is our input from the public. It looks about evenly split, or close to it. Interestingly, I think that appears to be the case in lots of polls that I've seen. It's a very, very interesting, very interesting matter that remains to be seen what will happen. Certainly, this board has a position they'd like to take on it. Again, this is regarding congressional maps. This is not regarding supervisors' maps. I just want to be very clear to the public for that. Supervisor Peters, you have punched in. Flores, yours.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would like to thank staff for bringing this item back and share my thoughts on why I believe that this board should take a formal position on Prop 50. At its core, Proposition 50 is a partisan attempt to roll back the will of California voters. In 2010, California passed a law that took redistricting power out of the hands of politicians and gave it to an independent citizens' commission in the name of fairness, transparency, and trust. Now, Governor Newsom and the legislature want to undo that. Instead of an open, transparent process, these new maps are going to be drawn behind closed doors by party insiders, specifically the Democratic Congressional Campaign Committee. That is not democracy, that is a power grab. Some are trying to justify this by pointing to Texas and saying, "Well, look what they're doing with redistricting over there." But we are not Texas, and if you don't like what they're doing over there, the answer is not to turn around and do the exact same thing. I would hope we are above playing political tit-for-tat with people's representation. Now, I've heard the argument that Prop 50 is somehow more democratic because it lets people vote, but let's be real, by the time voters see this map, it's already set in stone. There's no public input, no transparency, and no ability to change anything. That is not meaningful participation. That is damage control after a backroom deal. And let's talk about cost. The special election is expected to cost taxpayers over $200 million during a time California is facing a $20 billion deficit, which brings me to another point that really bothers me, and that's that last year, California voters passed Proposition 36 with the clear intent of expanding treatment and rehabilitation options instead of incarceration. That was a direct mandate from voters to the state, and yet the state and governor chose not to fund it. So, the message there was, your vote matters unless we don't like the outcome. That is hypocrisy. When voters approve something like Prop 36 aimed at real reform, they're ignored. But when politicians want something like Prop 50, they throw money at it, and we don't... Excuse me. They throw money we don't have at a special election to get it done. That's not principled leadership, that is politics at its worst. I don't care whether you're Republican, Democrat, or Independent, this affects everyone. When one party gets to redraw maps without oversight, balance, and without input, we all lose. Competitive districts disappear, and so does accountability. So, I'm asking my colleagues to join me in approving a resolution to formally oppose Prop 50, and let's take a stand up for fair representation, responsible budgeting, and for honoring the will of California voters, not rewriting the rules just to serve people in power. Thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Peters? Colleagues, would any of you like to weigh in? Supervisor Flores?
Yeah, thank you, Supervisor Peters, for bringing this matter before our board. Our board usually does not get involved in state initiatives, but I think this time we have an exception here, and rightly so. So, I know this is a state redistricting issue, but I do want to weigh in and weave in the local redistricting process because I think it's somehow related. So, you mentioned the theme of outcomes, Supervisor Peters, and that's very important because I remember, you know, this is a decennial process up and down the state throughout 58 counties, including our own state proper, but yet, when those in Sacramento don't like the trajectories of federal positions and races, they're weighing in, they are circumventing the decennial process that we've relied on historically, they are circumventing the very own voter initiative that established the independent redistricting commission years in advance. And so, I don't like this manipulation of processes and outcomes, even though the voters will ultimately decide. I do appreciate the voters having a say. But when we look at our own redistricting here, we went through a year-long exercise, I've been through two here, where we had public input, we had maps, the public drew the maps, and that outcome, they didn't like, people sued, that's their right, they went to court the second time that I went through it, to finally impose a map on the people of Kern County despite our process. They didn't like that outcome, they didn't like the outcome of that election, and being general here. So, they passed an initiative locally to impose term limits, which is their right again, but it's about outcomes. They didn't like the outcome of the board, they passed a local term limits initiative. They didn't stop there. They ran a bill in Sacramento because they didn't like how Kern County did it. We were singled out out of 58 counties to come up with our own special selected committee to do redistricting at the end of this decade. We were singled out by Sacramento, so I'm kind of tired of being singled out by Sacramento for desired outcomes. Let the process move forward. We've had these processes in place for good reason. Let them stand. So, I will happily support and make a motion, oh, actually, second your motion. So, I just wanted to say that for the record. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Flores. Would any of my other colleagues want to weigh in? Supervisor Couch?
Well, thank you. I want to talk a little bit about what Supervisor Flores just mentioned, and I think you probably mentioned it too, Supervisor Peters, but I'm going to equate it to what we go through when we have to do this. I think, and to correct me where I'm wrong about this, but our staff, CIO's office, generated some maps, the last time this was done in 2011. No, excuse me, 2021. I specifically remember 2011 more than 2021 for some reason, but I remember in 2011, there's probably at least as this many done in 2021, there were probably more than 20 maps, possible maps, that were drawn up. Do you recall? Sanders, were you here then? I think you were.
I was not here for your last...
You were here in 2011, though.
In 2011? That sounds about right. On average, there's roughly around 20.
Okay, and those maps were taken all over the county. Public hearings, I want to say public hearings, but public meetings, they were taken to chambers of commerce, they were taken to city council meetings, they were taken to rotaries, they were taken to any place that anybody had an interest in seeing those maps and commenting on them and giving recommendations. And that's not a simple process, it's not a short process. That took several months, if not maybe almost a year, before it ever got to the Board of Supervisors for a decision. None of that occurred in this case. There's a single map that's drawn. I don't believe there was one word of public input by anyone. And I heard today that there's a firm that drew the maps. Well, who instructed them to do that would be a good question, because per Prop 20 passed in, and I think it was 2008, which created the independent redistricting commission, no elected person was supposed to be involved at all in the drawing of the maps, much less having even any input into the drawing of the maps. And I think all of that is out the window, and the state's going to spend a little over a quarter of a billion dollars to do that. And those are just a few of the reasons that I'm going to support the motion. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Couch. I do think it appropriate to highlight that that particular process by Kern County in 2011 was eventually a challenge in the federal courts because of manipulation and illegalities that occurred, and ultimately, we lost that suit, and it was determined that Kern County actually engaged in pretty significant manipulation last minute of the maps. And all of the maps that had been considered that you just referenced a moment ago, none of them were actually voted on. We had a last-minute map that was introduced without any consideration of the public, without any public input, and for those reasons, we lost that lawsuit. So, I just think it's appropriate that we make that clear for the public, that that process was determined to be rife with manipulation, unfortunately. With that said, Supervisor Harley, your thoughts?
I know we're going to vote here in a second, but I just want to verbally say I support this motion. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor. Any other comments or questions from the board? Okay, I think we have a motion and a second. Please, colleagues, cast your votes.
The motion is approved. Four ayes, one opposed. Supervisor press.
Thank you so much. This brings us to the end of our afternoon agenda. Our next hearing is October 7, after that, October 21. Thank you very much. I appreciate the very cordial and civil conversation we're able to have on these matters. They are complex, and we will see what the voters do here in just a few weeks. Thank you very much for the conversation.
Motion to adjourn.
And...
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Jeff. Motion to adjourn.